If we could have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Mum?
Here.
Commissioner Nocida?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Mayor Neely?
Here. Please join me in the flag's limit.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have no special ceremonies, presentations, or proclamations. This is a time for citizen comments for any topic that's not listed on the agenda. We're allowed three minutes to speak. If there are issues, in fact, that deal with code enforcement issues and those kinds of things, those are really processes that go through a different process than the City Commission. If you have concerns about that, you probably should try to work out things with the appropriate staff. With that, are there -- I'll check my -- on the floor, and William Gifford, if you want to come forward.
Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City, and I wanted to give a brief report as Secretary of the Citizen Involvement Council of a couple of things. Last week, we had the first of two parts of a community forum series that we are hosting regarding the emergency preparedness and such. This was held, I thought it was a relatively successful adventure. This is jointly sponsored by the Citizen Involvement Council, the Oregon City Public Works, the Oregon City School District, and the Clackamas Fire District. And it was well attended, and we're having another one on November 10th. That'll be Thursday night at 7:00. We expect it'll be at the same venue of the Jackson Campus of the Oregon City High School, the old Oregon City High School campus. The second thing I wanted to report on is, in our ongoing efforts to reactivate all of the neighborhood associations, we are once again going to be having a reactivation meeting of the Gaffney Lane Neighborhood Association. That'll be next Thursday, the 27th, at 7:00, at the Garden Meadows Home in Gaffney Lane. And further information can be found by going to the website, the city's website, or by contacting Chris Taylor, Chris Wadsworth, the neighborhood liaison. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Dan Holliday. I live in Oregon City. In interest of global warming, or climate change, or whatever, Nancy, could you scan these and fax them, or get them to the City Commission when they get a chance? I come to you tonight as a member of a new organization, the Executive Committee of the Lamont Falls Media Center, the Friends of Lamont Falls Media Center, Inc. And we have formed a new organization, Friends of Lamont Falls Media Center. It is a nonprofit. We have established all of the proper legal entities in order to begin the formation of a 501(c)(3). And the mission here is to transition Lamont Falls to a nonprofit status. We have secured commitments from Wilsonville, Damascus, Clackamas County, and I'm here tonight to ask for that same commitment from the City of Oregon City moving forward to help us transition the center, to secure the investment that our community has made in capital improvements to the facility, and to help us move forward with public access for Oregon City. It's obvious to us that the City of West Lynn is not interested. At our last Clackamas Cable Access meeting, we had a motion to approve our budget, and rather than take the opportunity to fulfill their duties, the West Lynn members chose to walk out of the meeting and prevent a quorum so that we couldn't vote on our budget. What that indicates to me is that those folks are not interested in cooperating and moving the Media Center forward. There is obviously some personal issues between the City Manager of West Lynn and one or more of the council in West Lynn and the Media Center that are irreconcilable. It is disappointing to me that public servants would choose to, rather than make public policy which is good for their cities --
Watch your back.
Yeah, I will. Would choose to follow their own personal agendas. So what I'm asking you folks to do is to give us your support. The center has been working since 1985 and providing a public service, and I don't think there's any question between the Chamber and the city and other folks that our staff has been more than sufficient in doing that job. And we would like to continue to move forward and be able to provide public access for Oregon City and the surrounding communities in Clackamas County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'll just simply make a comment. I think you've picked up from the City Commission that we've been satisfied with the services. We just would need, I think, legal advice because of the joint ownership of West Lynn, by West Lynn and Oregon City, of the assets and so forth. So this is something that's going to have to be clarified in this transition.
Well, I think we realize that there will be a transition, and there will be a -- and in my discussions with Mr. Frazier, I've likened it to a nasty divorce, and I think there's going to be, you know, there's going to be some of that element that's going to happen.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask specifically what you're asking for as support?
Well, I think, to start with, just, you know, because the City Manager of West Lynn has been going to other cities in Clackamas County and saying that, you know, Lamont Falls is going to go away, and you should join us in going to MAC, what we're trying to say is, no, Lamont Falls Media Center isn't going away, and we're going to continue to provide the service. And just a general commitment from the City Commission in Oregon City is saying that, no, we're not planning on going anywhere. We're not going to throw away the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we've committed in capital funds and other things, building this brand-new facility. We're not going to walk away from that commitment at this time. And I think that's all I'm asking for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Kevin Hott. I live in Oregon City. I'm in kind of a catch-22 here because this Agenda Item 4 citizen comment's not supposed to be for items that are on the agenda, but because I'm asking you to take something off the consent agenda, if I wait until that item is up, obviously, they won't have a chance to comment on it. I'm asking you on number 8(c), or actually, I have some questions and comments about this. This is an item that previously was before the Urban Renewal Commission at a prior meeting, and also on the City Commission agenda, and it was taken off both agendas in order for there to be executive session meetings. And I just have some concerns about this because it seems to me, well, I can tell you right now, you know, it's fine if somebody made a mistake at some point, you know, and made an agreement to sell something that they didn't own, but my concern is this, if as a lawyer, I did that for a client, and it wasn't revealed till years later that I had committed a large, you know, a large population of people in this way to sell something that turns out I had no right to draw an agreement up for them to sell, I would be facing very severe professional discipline. I'm not asking anybody be disciplined. What I'm asking is this be made transparent. I don't think this has any business being on a consent agenda. The people of Oregon City have a right to know how it occurred that the Urban Renewal Commission entered into agreement to sell something it didn't own, and how that could escape discovery for such a long period of time. Again, it's not for vindictive purposes that I ask this. This is not to punish anybody or say, gosh, you really screwed up. But to put this on a consent agenda and not have a discussion over it, I think, is outrageous. How about some transparency on this item? This is the kind of thing, this is why there are people demonstrating in a thousand cities around the world. I'm being very serious. This is why. It's things like this, just brushing this kind of thing under the rug. So I'm Kevin Hott. I'm one of the 99 percent. I would like you to take this off of the consent agenda and have it openly discussed so that the people of this community know exactly how this happened. Thank you.
Let me just clarify something. This that's before us has nothing to do with the property ownership in question. We're asked to create an easement, but I'll be happy--
I'm asking about item 8(c), sir.
He's talking about this one.
8(c), which is the assumption, exactly what we're talking about, the assumption of, by the City of the option agreement that was previously entered into by the Urban Renewal Agency, which, as it turns out, had no ownership.
We'll pull, I have no problem pulling it off. Our next thing is the adoption of the agenda, and we can deal with it. I'll be asking something else to be polled, too. I don't have anybody else listed for comments at this point, so the adoption of the agenda, are there items that anybody wishes to request to be polled?
Yes. And I already have my name on this list before the citizen comment tonight, so I would propose that we, I move that we remove 8(c) from the agenda completely.
Okay. And item A, I want to, completely and not discuss it?
8(c).
You mean not discuss it at all?
I don't think, I don't think we need to.
Okay.
I mean, I'm open either way. If you want to remove it, I would prefer to remove it completely, but if we, or we can remove it to the regular meeting, that's fine.
Well, the issue, I guess, is a case of transparency, so we should probably, well, we can discuss it within the regular session. We don't have to take action on it.
All right.
And the other one is the, I'd like to have A polled, so--
A.A.?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I was going to say.
So--
At 8(b), earlier, we discussed about--
And I believe staff has polled B. Is that right?
Yes.
Because, yeah. Yeah. So A and C are being polled for discussion, and B is being pulled off and perhaps covered at a later date. Are we all agreed on that?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go ahead and continue, then.
Thank you.
We have general business ordinance for introduction, 11-10-10 granting a telecommunication franchise to Quest Communication Company, LLC, to occupy certain rights of way within the City of Oregon City. It's now at Centerlink, or whatever it is.
Century.
Centurylink.
Yes, good evening, Commission. Before you is the introduction of an ordinance for the renewal of a 10-year franchise agreement with Quest Communication Company. This proposed franchise has a 10-year term, and it's very similar to the expired franchise. The franchise permits Quest to maintain its current facilities in the city's rights of way. The proposed franchise requires QCC, is the acronym there, to comply with all of the Oregon City Municipal Codes and other applicable laws and construction standards. They have agreed to pay the city from $1.50 per lineal foot, the previous 10 years, to $2.75 per lineal foot for facilities in the city's rights of way. The budget impact will be approximately for each year in 2010 through 2020, $25,346.75. I'm here to answer any questions, and our city attorney is up to speed on this as well.
And the lineal foot charge is now our normal way of handling these kinds of franchise fees. Is that not right?
In this case, yes.
Any questions of our attorney, or anybody else? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Just a minute, a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner, President Nocida, seconded by Commissioner Smith, to approve ordinance number 11-10-10.
For first reading.
For first reading.
First reading.
Well, this is introduction. Is it first reading as well?
Yes.
Okay, for first reading.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. This is ordinance number 11-10-10, an ordinance granting a telecommunications franchise to Quest Communications Company, LLC, to occupy certain rights of way within the City of Oregon City.
Hold a question?
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocida?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
I'm always worried when our attorney pauses, and he's expecting me to get the motion pass or a thread. I'm doing better, though. Anyway, second is Resolution 1123, establishing immunity from certain personal injury or property damage claims described in House Bill 2865. And our city recorder, I believe, is going to be addressing this.
Actually, I'm going to turn this over to our city attorney to handle this.
Sure.
Okay.
This is a recommendation to take advantage of certain immunities that the state legislature authorized, mainly for the city of Portland, but also opened up for smaller cities to deal with property and injury claims on unmaintained rights of way, among other things. The resolution before you tracks the language of the statute. I understand there were a couple of questions, and let me see if I can accurately summarize those questions. The first was, what do you do with the existing recreational immunities, if I heard that correctly? Those immunities remain on the books. The statutes which deal with them, which are ORS 105672 to 696, remain. This is an additional immunity and protection for private, it's not for public agencies. The second one, again, if I understand it correctly, was, what do you do about people who have severe injuries along these paths? That's not affected, there's no differentiation between torts that occur that produce small damages and larger damages. Let me make sure that I understood the question. I did try to communicate and get that earlier.
Let me rephrase it, as I recollect, having stated it.
Okay.
If you have someone who has no health insurance--
No health insurance.
So they're not protected by themselves.
Right.
And we adopt this immunity--
Yes.
And that person gets injured--
Yes.
And becomes a paraplegic or something. If we adopt these immunities, is that person just--
Out of luck.
SOL?
Out of luck.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
But if we did not adopt the immunity, would something like our CIS be able to give this person a life, if, you know, with those kind of severe injuries?
Again, I'm going to have to suffer and tell you that it will depend upon what other immunities are in place. The statutes I just mentioned may prevent any, you know, collection of damages in any event. You also have in place the Oregon Tort Claims Act, which has limitations on the amount that people can collect, $100,000, if I remember correctly, for personal damages. So those things would still be in place if you did not adopt this resolution.
So I have a question. If we adopt the, this is basically keeping people, like telling them to stay on the path, right? This is basically, if you wander off the path and you go down your own trail?
My understanding is that it was occasioned by people using unmaintained public rights of way.
Right.
We have several of those in the city. I mean, we're identified, and the street has never been built, and so we will never be built because it doesn't really go anywhere.
So this protects the city?
It protects the city from damage claims, and that's why the legislation was passed, and that's why it's offered to you. You need not accept the offer.
But on the other hand, although it protects the city as a corporate body, it could pose a risk to our citizens who might be precluded from recovery otherwise.
Yeah, I'm not sure it protects risks, but it makes no change except in the legal status of those risks, that they cannot sue the city. They may not be able to sue the city anyway, and they may be limited in whatever damages they collect by the Oregon Tort Claims Act.
Right.
So can you quantify what extra protection this provides the city as a corporate body that, over and above what's already on the books?
Well, I don't know if I can quantify it. What I can tell you is that the recreational use statute would not be affected by this, and the Tort Claims Act would not be affected. So if you did nothing, those two things would still be in place.
Recreational use, could you be more explicit? Somebody's in one of these right-ofways and playing softball?
Well, it was originally written for people who hunt on other people's property, or who use it for other recreational purposes, stream sides, for example. In 1995, the legislature decided to not subject those people to the normal tort liability. So to the extent that that would still apply, you're already immune.
Okay. But to me, it kind of seems that, given the balance of equities, that the system that's in place now, where if someone has a fact situation that's beyond one of these other immunities, like the Tort Claims Act--
Yes.
And we were found liable--
Yes.
Our CIS would pick it up?
Yes, they would defend the case.
Okay.
And they would pay a judgment--
Okay.
Up to a certain amount.
But if we adopt this, it seems to me that in those certain cases, this would deny the interperson that payment by CIS if he got around all of those other provisions.
I believe you are correct.
Okay. In that case, I'm against this.
Okay. That's fine.
Well, I personally am in favor of protecting the city. Since we're supposed to be doing that.
I understand that statement. I think I might conceptualize it a little differently, that there is a difference between protecting the city as a corporate body and protecting our citizens, and that's what I'm concerned about.
Well, and I get that piece, too. I get that piece, too. But if I go to Kansas and I fall down, I don't expect to sue the city. I mean, I don't know.
Let me pose a question. Fall down on this, yeah. Anyway, I guess the question I pose is this, not to the attorney, but do we have any idea how many claims we've had that we've had to pay out on that deals with these unused right-ofways? Do you know of any, within your short time?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question?
Sure. I was just asking, how often have we had to pay out on these kinds of accidents within your time?
Um--
In unused right-ofways?
Only, I can think of, there have been a lot on sidewalks.
Yeah, but this, this is not what we're talking about.
I can't think of any in my six years here.
Yeah. I don't, I mean, I don't know that we're at that great of a risk, and I can't help feeling, in a similar vein as to Commissioner Nocida, that we have a person, we've got this slope, and we have this right-ofway, and even if it's, even if it's unused, it could be accessed by the public, I presume, because it is a right-ofway, goes down there and goes down the state bank to go fishing and injures themselves.
I could see it either way.
So do you, anybody want to put forward a motion?
I have just one more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I just want to get, I'm a visual person, so what are some examples of these type of places around the city? I think that, I was looking at maps for some other topic, and I think the road all the way out to Kanema Cemetery is an example.
Well, it's some of the, some of the extensions of existing streets in Kanema--
Streets, right, which that is.
Would be such, such right-ofway.
So, I mean, just some realistic examples of these places we're talking about.
Waterboard Park.
Okay.
Yep.
Near High Rocks. Lieutenant Mann suggested that. Some of our trails on the edge of the Cove.
Well, this issue is probably very applicable to someplace like High Rocks, for instance.
Yes.
But the trail on the Cove wouldn't be a case, would it?
I'm sorry.
If it's unproved right-ofway--
Nancy corrected me, that's not an example.
It's approved, yeah.
It's not. So does, I will move not to adopt Resolution 11-23.
Second.
Any other discussion? A vote, please?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocida?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
No.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes. Actually, the resolution is denied four to one.
Now, we're, we pulled three things off the consent agenda for discussion. B is not going to be dealt with here. I will start with A. Well, you want to approve the consent agenda with A, B, and C polled?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
So we'll go ahead and have a discussion of A?
We need, we need a vote on--
Can I have a first reading, please?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocida?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Yeah, on this particular, I introduced it, apparently, Council President, Commission President Nocida was also going to pull it, too. I, from my standpoint, there's a couple of things there. One, we seem to be dealing with study sessions alone. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what the changes do.
And I was using the purpose of electronic communications as a basis of assessing information that would help us in the decision. I, but I think, even the way it's stated there, we're using it for a specific purpose. I think that in the, I don't have any, I think it might apply to City Commission meetings as well, but I would like it to be more specific, that the source that is being accessed by a commissioner be identified, so it's actually part of the public record. And I don't think, I don't think the, I don't think what's before us here is that strong of language. We just say we're doing it for a given purpose. And I think it has, and maybe I'm wrong, but that's what I picked up.
I'm referring to page eight--
Okay.
--of the document, and the new, the correction would be, use of such devices is generally permitted only at work sessions so long as it is disclosed to the public and remains courteous to guests and meeting attendees.
See, the, yeah, I know.
Disclosed to the public.
Disclosed to the public, it's not clear what has to be disclosed.
Okay.
And I think the, I think the information that's been gathered, what's the side you're looking at, what you're, if you're looking for some kind of email response to something, any of that has to be actually specifically disclosed at the meeting.
Okay, so we could insert at work sessions so long as the information accessed is disclosed to the public? Would that be a simple enough change that would--
Not that it could be, it could be recorded, and somebody could relatively easy, relatively easily access that information for themselves.
Okay, so I have a question. We were given a date earlier of November 8, and so I pulled out my phone and put it in my calendar. Do I have to declare that?
You just did.
It's your policy.
I mean, I didn't access any information other than my calendar.
I would say--
I think we can--
Probably, it's a perception of the public, maybe.
If it's personal information, it does involve anybody else, I don't think it's an issue. I mean, you may have written some notes on the document, that, or your own notes that you're bringing forward. And I think, I think that, you know, I, I think, I think we can leave that out. I mean, you can say, I'm, yeah, I don't, I don't think that's an issue.
Okay.
And I'm not sure writing something in your calendar, in deliberations of something is, you're not going to make a decision on what we're deliberating by entering something in your calendar, anyway.
No.
So I, I think it would be something we're accessing in terms of deliberations and decision-making. And I don't know if we need to make that clear or not.
What if you're deciding when the meeting is?
Well, I think you see the purpose of what I, my purpose is, is that if it's going to be, if it's public, if it's public information, then we need to know the sources of what that public information is.
Right.
Right. So would that clarify it for you then, if...
Well, yeah. The other question is, why are we complying only to study sessions?
We had this discussion at the last meeting, and if I recall correctly, the work sessions were more of a relaxed atmosphere where, where you could, it would be more acceptable to access other information. Whereas the formal meetings, generally the information is already presented to you in advance and, or through exhibits that are presented at the meeting.
I'm just going to ask our city attorney what concerns he might have.
Well, you make such a broad, first of all, you have a broad prohibition right now for city commission meetings, and you have to be comfortable with that. And then, secondly, you have a, an exception, as I understand it, from, you had a work session, and you talked about having some communication available at work sessions. And you can certainly talk about the information accessed. There may be some practical issues on, do you have to interrupt the rest of the meeting and say, go to www.oregoncity.com or, or something like that?
You know...
Sorry?
I'm sorry. I had just an example that popped into my mind. Do you remember, Jim, you were asking this question of the attorney, and you said, "I did my own research." So would you have had to have said where you found your research? Do you know what I mean? I mean, you didn't do it here. You didn't look it up here. But you brought the paper and said, you asked the...
Are you talking about this evening?
Yeah, the evening, this evening, you asked the attorney a question for clarification or something.
Yeah, I think that's revealing what happened in executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
It was just a, an example that popped into my head.
But in a hypothetical matter, if someone did some research, I mean, I think it wouldn't be hard to say, "I found this in the law library, ran this on the Westlaw."
Under the proposal made by the city recorder to revise what you have there, that would be accessible and have to be disclosed. You might want to figure out how you disclose, whether you do it immediately, you do it after the meeting, or some other way. What's the end of this? Why are you doing it?
Yes.
Probably basically for verification. I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to be transparent in our deliberations and how we're, we're dealing with the issue. Well, there's information available, which we can gain access to when we're doing our deliberations.
Certainly, the city recorder's proposal to make it available immediately would be meet your goal of transparency.
Right. And I just, I just want to be clear that where you're getting the information is quoted. And I don't think that'd take too much time to do that. You accessed it, so you should be able to say where you accessed it from.
Okay. So, so then, we could state, use of such devices is generally permitted only at work sessions so long as the information is accessed and its location identified to the public. And then the rest of the sentence. And remains courteous to guests.
It gets us around with Raff's personal emails coming in during our deliberations and so forth, won't they?
Well, you wouldn't have that during your regular session. We're talking about a much more relaxed...
Yeah, I understand that. I, I posed a question, why not the work session, and I think you're, you address that.
That sounds like you just read it grammatically correct, so do you want us to correct it? Somewhere in there?
You could, you could still go ahead and approve the resolution with the modifications, and then we can work on the grammatically correct.
We can bring, we can bring it forward next time.
On the consent agenda?
Huh? On the consent agenda?
Next one.
We can poll again if we want to.
You've got to recognize the rules now.
Just a couple more words.
Okay. And then C. I think, I feel probably that, maybe we could have our city manager and the city attorney perhaps discuss the issue that's before us.
I don't have anything to say about that, we were talking about in our executive session.
Well, I mean, the, the issue is ownership of property, right? And so, we've, we've determined, and I guess I can state this, and I don't know what more I can state, that in 1992, we, the city actually procured this property. This is a fact. And I don't think any of the current staff that are here have been involved. We're here at that point in time. And at some point, the, the, it was assumed that it was owned by the Urban Renewal Agency. And we were wrong. It was not owned by the Urban Renewal Agency. It was owned by the city. The city procured it. That's basically a statement of the facts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question was, how did that happen?
Sir, I'm sorry you had to come forward. You have to come up to the mic.
Yeah. You know, I, I don't know if we know how that happened.
Has it been looked into? How, how are you going to ensure that it doesn't happen again? That's my question. It's, it's not a little joke. It's a...
No, I know it's not a joke. Believe me, we know it's not a joke.
And again, it's not, I mean, nobody's, there's no talk about rolling heads or anything. But I, I mean, this needs to be looked into, I think, rather than just saying, "Well, there was a mistake made. We, somebody made an assumption they shouldn't have made." Has anyone looked into it?
Well, I think...
I mean, the facts that were just restated, I mean, that's obvious. I mean, that's, that's obvious from what's printed here. Just like, just like, I mean, if someone's asked how this happened. Well, beyond what we discussed in the executive session, the whole point of my comment was, don't hide behind executive session. Don't hide behind the consent agenda. I know no more now than I did at the beginning of the meeting, and I would just simply like to ask that this be looked into and that the people of Oregon City be told how this happened. I feel like this is just being brushed aside again right now. I'd like to see it set for, on the agenda at a, at a time certain in the future. And I'd like there to be a report to the citizens of Oregon City, how it occurred that an agreement was made to enter into with a corporation that is, is of great public interest at the present time, Historic Properties LLC. There's a matter of great public controversy going on with that corporation and with the, the person who's the head of that corporation, and with private and personal agendas, and attempts to recall a commissioner and everything else. And, and to take this kind of an error and to sweep it under the rug is unacceptable to me as a citizen.
First, I'd have to say, nobody's sweeping it under the rug. And second, I would have to say that I think our staff has fully understood that there was a mistake made, and they have put policy in place to make sure it does not occur again.
What is that policy, Commissioner?
Well, we have not, we cannot expose everything at this point.
Can't expose what the policy is?
You will have to be...
I call that sweeping it under the rug, Commissioner.
But, Mr. Director, I can explain to the council publicly what the policies are, and that may satisfy a member of the public. Maybe it won't.
Yeah.
Some of the stuff we talked about in executive session, I have no problem telling you what I know. From looking at the documents today, I discovered that as early as 1992, when I was not a city manager and wasn't one here, there was a transaction that occurred.
There's a transaction that occurred, and in that original transaction, someone made a mistake about property ownership. And it was assumed, then incorrectly, again, in 1999, when the lease was renewed, no one, no one went back and said, "Well, was the original one correct?" Everyone assumed, based on that original mistake in 1992, that the property was owned.
Can you describe in detail the 1992 mistake?
There was a mistake in the assumption of ownership on who owned the property.
There was a mistake. Okay.
It was in 1996 when we entered a lease agreement with Groco. And I think they, it could have been as simple as they took the lease that we have with the other party, that it's on urban renewal property, and used it. It could have been assuming that whole strip, the person that was, staff person on that lease wasn't here in 1992, I don't believe.
Right.
And we took that lease to the Urban Renewal Commission to have them approve it. And that's, they, they felt at that time it was urban renewal property. I think it's an honest mistake.
Okay. So are these papers...
Research that's been done, all this documentation has been collected? Is it in one central place?
I just looked at the minutes from the meeting in 1996 when they approved the lease agreement. And it was, the conversation was, this is a lease agreement between the Urban Renewal Commission and Groco Properties, and it's, it's similar to the lease between Clackamas Landscapes, client, Urban Renewal Agency. And that was about it. That's what I found in the minutes.
All available to the public.
I don't think there's much other information, though, to tell you the truth.
And then I was going to address what we've done.
And the city, 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 no, there's no private entity that owns that property. The city owns that property. The Urban Renewal Agency has been collecting the lease money on that, and we'll have to deal with that.
And to remedy it in the future. Each and every department head is responsible individually
for any transactions that occur within their departments. Public Works specifically, I think, is to create a form for, boxed for that to be checked and signature. And then, and our land use transactions in the Community Development Department require a title report. And that's as good now. Somebody can make a mistake on a title report. That's possible.
So some initiative member of the public could request these documents through the Public Records Act?
Absolutely. I would say, rather than going through that expense, let's have those records just available. Yeah, they're available. Depending on how lengthy they are, we're going to follow our existing ordinance on the production of public records, which I think you want us to. And I think there's a certain amount of free documentation or free assistance that's available in that regard. So...
I think, though, at some point, this commission's going to want to see all those.
Yeah.
So, as long as...
I, I'd actually like to request that those be provided to us at our next meeting.
Paul Edgar.
So, I just want you to know that I haven't searched every file in the city on this because I didn't feel like it would be necessary. So what I've done is looked at the minutes at which time the lease was reviewed and approved.
And that's all we've done. We haven't done a full-blown investigation.
And then when it was renewed in 1990.
We haven't made any of the assumptions that some of the folks here have made, because they may have other information that I don't have. But...
Really, Commissioners, my name's Paul Edgar. I'm the land use chair of the Kanema Neighborhood Association. This property, when I've gone, I have tried to take an effort a while back in concert with other players and other people, to look at all properties owned by the city of Oregon City and urban renewal properties, get a map, get property searches done on every one of the properties, to do as part of an asset management analysis of what we have in our portfolio. Do we have business plans associated with them? Do we have reasons for retention of every property? I, this is an ongoing process. I've got a large map, and I've got most all of the property documents that are available from the county assessor's office right now in my hands on, on every one of these properties. It's, I've just not had the time or have everybody working with me in a, in a public process to try to get it all correlated together so we could have the level of detail that really we should have on every property out there. But this property that we're talking about was property from Stimson Lumber, and it was all acquired using urban renewal money at the time that it was acquired, virtually the whole strip. Now, there could be easily a possibility that urban renewal money paid for this property, but in the way that it was eventually titled, it may not have been, it may have been titled in the, in this, with the city, but that could be just an error in how it was titled, not in who paid for it.
I think, from what I understand, the city paid for it.
Well, the urban renewal bought all of the rest of the property.
Right.
And I for it to, so for us to come back and say that this, when we bought all of the rest of the property, the Stimson property, and one little piece, all by itself, that was included in all of that transaction, was not bought and paid for by the Urban Renewal Commission, I don't know. Do you know? And, and what we need to do, though, is make sure that in fact, that there, that this error that might be out there, might be some type of other error other than, than what somebody's making it up to be. It may be property that should have been in the name of the urban renewal because we paid for it.
Well, I think that'd be very easy to find out.
And so, if in fact, if, and this goes back to those original 1992 documents. And this is part of what we've, many of us are trying to get down, is what do we have in the city? What do we own? Do we have, do we, are we good asset managers of it? And are we doing smart things? I have this map. I'd love to get you people to work with me or city staff or somebody, but it's going, it takes an effort, and I just don't want to see it all swept under the rug. Thank you.
Well, in 1992, I'm pretty sure Stimson was an active industry in Oregon City. So I don't think they would have sold any, I'm sorry.
They sold us all the rest of it under urban renewal names.
Yeah, I think that was later. We can find that out.
And so, you know, it would be consistent.
We can find out.
We should just find it out.
Yeah. I think, I think, I think, I think...
We have the records of the...
Mrs. Crushour thinks she knows the answer, though.
Yes.
And I think she's searched it.
And I want to verify everything so that, but we do, we did find records of the payment, so.
Do you have the records of what urban renewal paid for?
Well, we were specifically looking at the Groco site.
Yeah. But, but I know that we bought all of the Stimson holdings with urban renewal funds.
I'd need to research that. And I think we'd actually probably want to get our finance director involved.
Yes, I think so.
We're getting a little...
No, but I don't, I don't...
Something works wrong here.
It's something that we're going to have to sort out and how it happened. I mean, I, I think no one on staff is going to know how it, it happened without researching. No one on staff currently was involved in those procurements. And in 1992, I didn't serve on the commission. So I'm innocent.
Yes, sure.
Yes, I'm sure.
Mayor, I suggest that we produce these records for anyone that wants them. Anybody that, I want to repeat that. Anybody who wants these records, please, you can have them. Okay? And, and if you find something in there that bears further investigation, please let us know. And I, I mean, I, I would be really pleased if there was a red document in there that said, "This is the mistake we made." It probably won't be, but if there is some, something in there that, even something that raises an eyebrow,
Right.
please let us know, because that's a point in which I would like to do a more in-depth investigation, to make sure that the corrective actions that we have in place now would actually address whatever that error was. Because if we made corrective action and the error was caused by something different, then we may need to take some other action. So...
With that, city manager's report.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mayor, we have, we have one more speaker?
You have another speaker, yes. Vicky Bayless. Sorry.
Thank you, Vicky Bayless. Bayless and Bayless, Attorneys for Historic Properties.
Mm-hmm.
I certainly applaud the city trying to sort out how you got to this point and modifying your procedures. I assume part of the documentation that the city manager has is the lease, the current lease, again, with the Urban Renewal Agency as the landlord. But one of the things that's important here is for us to have some sort of timeline or some expectation of when you're going to reach some conclusions. We are, have been operating in good faith. We're midway through some agreements. And I, I think it would be appropriate to, to set some parameters. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, communication, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to let you know that I received a telephone call today from Clackamas County Fire Chief Ed Karchoffer, and he notified me that the district had appointed a new fire chief. Ed's going to be retiring. I'm kind of sorry to see that, because he's an Oregon City guy and really has been just tremendous for us to work with. They're going to, they've appointed Fred Carlton, Charlton, C-H-A-R-L-T-O-N, as their new fire chief, and he'll be taking Ed's place here in just a few weeks. Also, we have a, we have a slideshow, I think.
Oh, yes.
And I'll let Nancy pull. You can pull down the, the screen for us. And while she's working on that, I'll give you a couple of other things that we're... Recently, Commissioner Roth reminded me that we were about midterm or a little bit beyond that in our goals for the year. Not, not the calendar year, but the goal-setting year. So I have now our updated goals report, and I want to hand that out to each of you. Please take a look. Keep that for future reference if you'd like. I also have that in electronic version, if you'd rather have an electronic version.
Oh. This is going to be fun.
This is going to be a little show about, about a week ago, our city com-
This is going to be a little show about, about a week ago, our city commission got on a jet boat and took a tour of Willamette Falls from the river perspective. And we wanted to share what we saw and the pleasant weather we endured during the trip.
Yes.
And most of the people on this boat are either from Metro, from the city, from the county. There are also people there from the state, and a person from the governor's office, and some citizen representatives. I think Jerry Herman was among our citizen guests, representatives from the Willamette Falls Area Heritage Coalition. And it looks very different from the river, as you can see, than what we, most of us see every day when we walk by.
I think everybody knows that's locks, but...
The gentleman in the cab there was narrating the whole way, so we had a description of what was happening.
Of course, it's a site.
There's a Blue Heron right there.
There literally was a Blue Heron in that photograph. Nancy, are these going to be on our website?
They will be.
Yeah, so if any members of the public would like to see them, you can go to our website as well. There's the water slide.
Our sculptures along the riverside there that I refer to as the shoehorns look nothing like Willamette Falls.
I knew you were going to let that go. What an amazing place we live in.
The most natural views are the most impressive.
Yep.
Yep.
The site where the petroglyph was?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you can see, I think you can just see it. Should petroglyphs.
Olden nests.
Small nest.
Eighty, or the 360 it was, wasn't it?
I don't know. I think it's worth pointing out that tremendous interest in, by Metro is indicated there. We had five of the, I believe five of the Metro commissioners were on this, on this trip with us, so, as well as, as well as Metro staff.
So, Mayor and council, I have just a couple of other things. The jug handle, pile-driving portion of that started this week, and you have seen a few of the, and to the layperson, which would include me, when I'm driving to Beaverton and seeing the same thing on the way home late from council meetings, they're driving piles over there on 217 in a similar project, and I'm lucky enough to live about two miles from there. But if I didn't, and I was one of the people being awakened, and I didn't work in government, and I didn't know all these details, I would say, "What are they thinking now? Why is government dumb enough to do this at 2:00 AM?" So, and I asked Nancy Crushour that question earlier when I found out about this project, not quite as directly. And what I've learned is that essentially, it takes four or five hours to mobilize the pile-driving equipment there, and that we were, kind of had a Hobson's choice between having roadway shut down during rush-hour traffic for mobilization of the equipment, or having piles, and that way, we could drive piles earlier in the evening, like from 7:00 to midnight instead of midnight to 4:00 AM. So, we had a choice between having some sleepless nights with the noise, or having much more lengthy delays on the roadway during the daytime. And so, a choice was made after conversations with both the commission, and also our neighborhood associations, and with ODOT, and the contractor, that the lesser of these two evils would be to have the pile-driving at night. And from there, they came up with the various ideas on how to try to muffle the sound. You know, they've got different techniques, bags that they put around these things, that they try to subdue the sound, but I have a feeling, if you're right there, a couple of blocks away, it's not going to do much good.
Or miles, or in other cities.
Yeah, I don't know how loud it really must be.
I don't know. Oregon City has this, well, with its geography, you can hear it from Holcomb, from high school, from everywhere.
So, I, I was going to ask Nancy, Nancy, do you want to say any more about that, or have I encapsulated what you wanted to say?
I think you've captured what, what is going on, because it really is, we've heard from so many people, do not cause congestion at that intersection during the jug handle project. And, and ODOT doesn't want the congestion, because 213 backs up to Beaverton Road and beyond, and then it backs it by 205, and thousands and thousands and thousands of people are impacted. The, I, and we have, we did a lot of public outreach when we were planning and designing the project, and we spoke about pile-driving at night. And at that time, people that we talked to about, they said, "You know what? We know we have to get this done." And so, it's, but surprise, now it is. So, but, and also, we had a meeting, a meeting with the Park Place Neighborhood Association specifically the other night, and explained the whole situation. And our project team left with the feeling that everyone was very understanding. There are a few people that are still very annoyed, but they also realized that this particular transportation project is one that they've been asking for, for years, because they're so, they're very concerned about the congestion in that area, because they use those roads every day. And it's interesting, too, you can hear it in all these places, but it's not regular. There's other places you don't hear it. So, it's, it's strange acoustics. Okay, now, a little bit of good news is that we're done driving for this week, and there will be pile-driving again next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And if things go as per planned, about four or five piles a night, we'll be done. So, that's the good news. And the other thing that the project team got to thinking about was this, right now, there's a good opportunity to visit the site and go under the new bridge and actually be able to see through. And it's kind of in between these, in this pile-driving, they'll be digging, now that they're done driving the piles this week, they're going to be digging out for the next, the other location. So, if any of the commissioners would like a tour, or the, anybody, well, it can't be anybody, but it would be like the city manager and the commissioners, if you'd like a tour next Wednesday at 5:00, our field inspector said it would be a great time to take anybody out who would like to see them. I guess, from what Alita from Goodrich says, who's the project manager, she said it's really cool right now. So, that offer's there, and if you want to go, maybe you can give me an email. I'll send an email out tomorrow. But I think that's...
Yeah, thank you.
And, you know, we care about this. We, I feel terrible that people are having trouble sleeping, but it's kind of...
The lesser of two evils.
Get it over.
So, I'm also going to ask Community Development Director Tony Conkle to talk a little bit about the demolition at Blue Heron. And I want to, I want to ask the commission, though, before I go to Tony, do you remember when we went on a tour there, we saw this round, spherical-shaped piece of metal with big giant rivets all over the outside of it on a stand? Well, that is a piece of equipment that, that they're not going to, that NRI Global could easily liquidate as scrap metal. And we're talking to them about that as a potential piece of art, or history, or something that we could use, something. There's a number of pieces of pertinence like that at the site, and we're making, essentially working with Metro to create a list of these things, that the trustee doesn't necessarily see any value in, but the city may, for one reason or another, think that there's something that could be used, that could be used for at a later date. So, I want to put your mind at ease a little bit, not completely, because I'm not in control of the site. But to some extent, we're making this list, we're giving it to Metro, they're meeting with NRI Global, and we're going to try to obtain or acquire some of these things, or get them in some kind of custody with the partners, so that they won't all be lost forever. And also, I appreciate Commissioner Nacida's watchful eye over the site, and please keep, keep it coming.
Feel like a prison guard on the wall, you know, looking down and keeping a gun.
Without the machine gun. Yeah. And then, and I will call on Tony here, just, in fact, this is probably the best time to go ahead with your comments, if you have any...
Before that, can I ask you a quick question? Commissioner Smith is in the past, I think a couple of us have raised in the past, the historic rollers that are, like, stamped 1924 on them. Is there any report on that piece of equipment?
I don't know if those are on the list. Do you know?
No.
They're? We don't. We're not at that stage yet.
Okay. They may have them on their list to sell, but we, we're not, we will be talking to Metro, though, on a weekly basis about the inventory on the site, so we'll keep that in mind.
Nancy, I think that that round spherical thing could very well be a diving bell water elevator. I know you want that water elevator.
Concerning the, some of the demolition that's going to be occurring on the site, it's actually part of, most of those tanks on there are considered equipment, and were part of the auction. So, and the auction is actually still ongoing.
What do you mean by tanks?
Some of the round storage tanks that are out there, so you have different-sized ones that held different materials, whether it be water, or some of the, the chemicals that were needed on site. So, they're not considered structures, building structures. They're non-building or equipment structures. So, a lot of that, because of what they're made of, are potentially going to be sold for scrap, or potentially sold for reuse. The, there's still ongoing sales occurring on the site. It'll probably happen for, throughout the rest of this month. So, it's still kind of a moving target as to what's, what's been sold, what hasn't been sold, what the disposition of some of those tanks on the site are. We've been in contact with NRI. We're working with them very closely. We've had a very good relationship with them so far. They're going to be presenting us with one, one general site plan for the removal of tanks on site, and we're going to do that through one demolition permit review. And that's going to be really addressing, the concern is addressing and understanding what chemicals were in those, in that equipment, and making sure that it's being taken down appropriately. So, that's where we're at on that.
Okay, Mayor, I only have one last thing. I had an email today from our finance director. This is the day when we received the actual tax levy information from the county assessor's office. And David's not here tonight, so I can brag on him a little bit. He, in our budget, we estimated within .97 percent what the variance would be, and that's about $85,000, and it could have been plus or minus $85,000. And so, the good news is, it's plus $85,000. And so, congratulations today for being within .97 percent on almost $100 million. Probably luck, I don't know, part of it was skill, I'm sure, but I appreciate that. Urban renewal was even closer. His estimate for urban renewal is .3, so that turns out to be $5,435 of favorable variance for urban renewal. So, not enough to do a listserv, but a start on the discussion. And that's all I have this evening.
Okay. A couple of announcements. November 5th, that's, that's Saturday, 10 o'clock, is the opening of the Winter Market, and it's also the unveiling of the Rotary Club's sculpture at Singer, at Singer Hill.
What game?
That's the, 10:00, 10:00 AM, 10:00 AM is for the unveiling of the sculpture. I'm not sure about the opening of the Farmers Market, but I think they're going to be in concert.
November 5th.
Okay, that's, if I've got that date right, that's a Saturday. It's November 5th, Saturday?
Mayor, the Rotary, Rotary representative came by the office today and asked me to make that announcement, and I were missing doing it, so thank you for, for doing that as well.
Our main, our Main Street coordinator told me to make the announcement some time ago, so, anyway.
Good.
I'll be interviewing on Thursday, we're going to be interviewing people for both the Urban Renewals and City Budget Committees, and also for our two granting committees, the Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust Committee, and the Metro Enhancement Committee, Committees at the budgets. We have, I think we have openings on virtually all of our boards, advisory boards, and committees. Please check the website if you're interested in any of those, and, and go ahead and make applications. With that, that's the announcements I have. Does anybody else have an announcement they wish to make? Yes, Commissioner Smith?
This could take a little while. And this is the topic that I emailed all the commissioners about, and I don't know if you've had that much time to look at it, but it's a, it's a discussion item, really, that I, I just asked to be, to spend a little time on during commissioner reports, because it is connected with the Oregon City Tourism Council, which I'm the representative of from this, this commission. In the process of, of starting to work on updating the TAP plan for Oregon City, which is the Tourism Action Plan, the county has also notified us that they are working on a program. This is between Clackamas County Tourism and Cultural Affairs, and they're working with Travel Oregon to develop a program for Clackamas County dealing with bicycle tourism, or tourism geared towards bicycle. As part of that program that the county's doing, they're reaching out to get input from each of the individual communities, one of which is Oregon City, and they want to know, "To what degree do we want to be involved in that discussion as it moves forward?" Their program, they're hoping is, you know, they're wanting to identify the assets and the potential of growing bicycle tourism, facilitate the creation of a community action plan that includes, includes and strategizes the assets, as well as identifies potential upgrade, new development projects, provide a context for working with nearby communities that share common assets, and potential, provide input, input to the TCA Tourism Council, or Tourism Cultural Affairs, that will help guide its own master planning process to strategically support community efforts to create a platform for counties, the county's bicycle tourism marketing and development efforts. So, I didn't want to commit the city to, I basically conveyed that I felt this is something that Oregon City would definitely want to be a part of. I didn't feel like I obviously could completely give the go-ahead to move forward in, as a commitment from our city, unless I brought it to the entire commission. One of the things that I, there's several answers that the county wants us to respond to, like, a week ago. And, and so, that's why I felt I needed to at least ask you tonight. So, I'm hoping to get input from you, either a little bit tonight, or at least respond to the email as soon as possible, so that we can move forward. There's really five things that I need to respond to the county with, in case we really want to be a part of this. And the number one thing is, do we think that this is something that we want to be involved in that discussion? I personally think we should. Then, it's, to what level can we deal with all these other commitments? And unfortunately, you know, most of these commitments, in terms of meetings, it fits more, me as a commissioner representing the city, because of the tourism aspects. But as usual, the county, I put that in an email, probably wasn't a good thing, but as usual, the county schedules all their meetings during the workday, which is convenient for no one to attend. So, most of, so I don't feel, you know, I feel that this is an important thing for us to be a part of the dialogue, and I feel like I'm probably the one to do that, but I can't do it. So, I'm concerned about that. I don't know if that means the commission is comfortable assigning one of the other commissioners that can do, or we trade off to meet some of these meetings, or if we have, you know, asked the Oregon City Tourism Council to be responsible for that collaboration. I don't know. I don't know. The first thing that happens is a teleconference call that takes place on Tuesday between 9:00 and 10:30, which we need to be at some part of. Then we need to respond to the availability of us to schedule essentially a workshop within our city, and there's all, there's about, two, three, four, five, there's a list of like five or six ideal dates for the county that we say, well, we, this date works best for Oregon City, we could hold it at City Hall, all those kind of things. That's the third thing they want to know. Fourth thing that they want to know, who is the contact person? So is that one of us, or is that one of the representatives from the Tourism Council? And a sign-off on the rationale for how they've broken up each community. In our community, there's community focus and rationale, and there are communities of Sandy and villages of Mount Hood, which were, can put together. Some of the communities were put together due to their proximity or, or, right, and proximity, well, proximity and geography. So Estacada, Malala were grouped together, Oregon City and Westland were grouped together. And so I'm assuming we think that that's an appropriate matching. So these aren't huge questions, but they're questions that they want answers to, like, immediately, and I don't know where to go with it myself at the moment, so I leave that to you to help me decide what we.
What's, what's the overarching goal of that effort? Do they, have they decided?
Well, this goes into, this, this is all really brand-new, and it, it, the document that kind of goes along with it is the closest I have to, to explaining that. And like, you know, I've spent some time, we've all, to think that bothers me so much is the, the need in which they want an answer pretty quickly, and I don't even feel like, I, I'm overwhelmed. I mean, I'm overwhelmed right now with this, some of the things that I'm working on with the city. This is not, you know, we think, I think that we all agree that this is very important, but we've got a lot of other priorities in the city, and I don't know to what degree we can tackle this at this, this point, and I've, I've read through this, but to give you a great overarching explanation of it, I don't feel like I can do that quite yet.
I, can I say, I read through all this stuff you sent to us, but my whole concern centered at, there's no times that anybody's available. They haven't accommodated anyone.
Well, I know, that's, that's my main, I mean, it's during the center of the day.
If it's any consolation to you, too, sometimes, you know, they'll have these great intentions, and what I, what I notice, and actually, other city managers in that region notice this, too, there's a real giant disproportionate amount of staff that we have available versus what they have available. And so they will create a program, or a department even, they'll come up with a great idea and a plan, they'll hire consultants, and they'll start calling us, and, and, you know, it takes a lot of time for us to even respond to those phone calls sometimes, and they, they mean well, but they just don't, they don't realize.
Don't understand it, it's a process.
I don't have 10 people to send every time they have an idea. And this is a great, I read through that, too, I read every word of it, and I thought, this is terrific. I felt it was terrific enough that I went and approached one of the busiest people in the city, which is Nancy Crushour, because I know she's a bicyclist. She's a cyclist.
And she wants to do this?
And I said, Nancy, have I got, I've got a deal for you. Yeah, and she did offer to give us her input, but, and try to make a few of the meetings for, if you needed the assistance, but as far as just carrying it, I don't think she's got the capacity to, to do it, and, and we've got our own marching orders from you guys on these other goals.
I don't know if anybody here can do the teleconference on Tuesday, I know I cannot at that time.
I cannot.
Is there somebody that you would recommend from the?
Tourism?
Well, that's what I wonder, I mean, I haven't, I haven't really discussed it. We have a meeting with that group on, I believe, Monday.
Well, that's a good idea.
So, I mean, that's a possibility, I mean, because there's people in that group that are, I mean, it applies to the tourism group. I didn't want to do that unless I brought that to you. I think that might be a possibility, so I can ask that. Unfortunately, the county, they're already, you know, wanting an answer. I said, well, I'd love to give you an answer maybe by Friday, but that, you know, so Monday, you know.
They're just going to live with it.
Right. So I, I think maybe I can bring that up.
And ask, at least as a lead-in, let's see if somebody's willing to participate in the teleconference.
Okay, okay, okay. And that's something that everyone's okay with on that part, and then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we can call that a good, good. I had no energy to go through this.
It's all right.
Thank you.
So that helps, thank you, appreciate it.
Any other items with that? Meetings are being moved, thank you.